We're calling to order our CUSD 201 school board meeting for December 17, 2024. We'll start with roll call.
Adina Hoover?
Here.
Whitney Rogers?
Here.
Jessica Redonia?
Here.
Carlos Avia? Angela Stecchetti?
Here.
Kevin Marin?
Here.
Leah Canover?
Here.
Will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start with the approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 12, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the November 12, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 26, 2024 special meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the November 26, 2024 special meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will enter public comment. We have one from Keith Nega.
Plus than three minutes now, so I'm gonna take some stuff off. Questions answered before. My name's Keith Nega. I'm a taxpayer in this resident in this school district. I graduated from Westmont High School. Okay? I've been to countless meetings and looking back on how it began and where we're at now and hearing things, I think the process needs to end. I don't think the referendum should go on the ballot. If you look at the needs and the concerns of the parents and the staff, most of them have been a little exaggerated, talking the day without the heat. Now, half the parents that I spoke with said, "Well, my kid never said anything," and then half the other ones said, "I don't know what you're talking about." You know, and then the ceiling falling, and that was a big one in the beginning. Now, if the ceiling fell, then there's something wrong with preventative maintenance or whatnot. And you can go on with the other things, and the prison yard, it's not a prison yard. It's a fourth and a fifth grade kid. What do they want to do? They want to run out in the field, they want to shoot the baskets, they want to kick the ball in the grass. So the phrasing of certain things and those brochures that we've gotten, you know, and they take the picture like a realtor. And it's like, that's not the right angle. You should just take it the way it is and not to make it look so like it doesn't. Preventative maintenance, to me, is the key to any building, whether new or old. I don't know, over the years, if something slipped, I don't care if it's a new house or an old house, you have to work on the house. Most everybody's house here, I'm sure, is 50 years plus. You're always going to have issues, you always got to be prepared for those issues. And who's to say if the new building, you know, I mean, granted, it's new, but you still got to get out ahead of things here. I guess the other point here is Manning's a solid brick building. There's plenty of schools around the suburbs and in the city that are just as old as that one. And to retrofit it to the new mechanics over the summers, granted, it's going to cost a little more, but not as much as a new building. Okay? Now, if you're talking about moving a new building north of Ogden, which seems to be the place it wants to go, every kid's going to have to get bused there. There's nobody, parents are going to want their kid to cross Ogden Avenue or Cass Avenue. No, not in a million years. So the transportation costs are going to go through the roof. And I think we have issues with it already, right? It might not, I mean, we spend a lot of money on transportation as it is. So I think that's something that needs to be addressed, I think. And then coming back here to the tax burden. A lot of people moved here, raised their kids here, sent their schools to their kids to the school. They want to finish their life here. They have their house the way they want it. And at one meeting, I was told I should sell my house because I don't have a kid in the school. Now, I went through that school, you know, whatever, but for me to say I should have to move because I don't have a kid, that's, that sounds sort of ridiculous to me. And if you look at the client, the kids, I mean, the lunch program is overwhelmed with kids on it for free lunches, if I'm not mistaken. And I believe the fees that we can't collect from a lot of these parents is through the roof, too. So that's why the tax burden, just cutting it down for one or two years on that step thing, it's not, not fair to anybody, I think. And I think in closing, I think the, this whole process, I didn't find out about it until my mother told me about it. I didn't get any of those mailings. I didn't, I got the last one, but nobody called me and nobody, I didn't get the mailings. And I still talk to people to the day, they didn't know nothing about this. They didn't even know it was on the last referendum. So I know I sit up here and talk and I don't think I'm going to change any minds tonight, but I think, I think if we would just went at, not even have a different way, but just spent the money more wisely, I know we don't have any money, but I think we could have done better, I think is what I'm trying to say. So that's where I'm at with that. So, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. There's no other public comment. We're going to move along to the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve, sorry. Is there, do you have, sir, sorry? Did you have a public comment? I don't want to speed past you. It just, you can fill this out later.
I think you filled one out.
I did have some comments, but I think the, you were somewhat addressed to, if I came here at 6:30, I apologize for.
That's okay.
For prior meeting.
No. No, that was public as well. That meeting was public as well, yes.
Did you just state your name for us and?
My name's Richard Brasek.
Can you come to the mic? Because the community can hear you later.
Yeah, Richard Brasek, in the district, been here since 1992. Yeah, my son did attend the high school. I, Keith here, has some very good points. I, some of my children went to other schools where the buildings are in, have a similar age. So the preventive maintenance topic that Keith brought up resonates with me as well. I belong in a couple of different associations in, you know, in Chicago with, you know, condominiums, and every year, we put money aside for reserves. Yes, and we're issuing bonds, too, to pay for, you know, upkeep for the property. So understand both sides of what you're trying to accomplish. Anyone, I just had a little, like, did anyone, has the board addressed alternate sources of financing for this effort besides bonds? Is it possible that the Village of Westmont may, you know, is, is there, did anyone explore any type of possibility with other than floating bonds where the burden would be solely upon the homeowners in the district? Any other types of finance, you know, sources of revenue? Yes, no?
So we don't respond to the public comment?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
At some point, we will reach out to you. But you can ask your questions and we can get back to you later.
Well, that was a, that was one thing that probably, yeah, is unique here. It's just, you know, has that ever been explained? So the burden is not entirely upon the homeowners, because looking at the tax, I'm sorry, the voting that was, you know, that occurred back in November, I believe it was like maybe six, maybe less, a little bit less than 6,600 votes were cast. Yeah. So for $75 million, that's a little bit, you're looking at, you know, yeah, and it's been said before, it's a substantial amount of money to be placed upon, you know, 6,600 people, you know. So, you know, yes, you're reducing your tax, you know, the tax, you're proposing a little bit over 9% reduction in your, you know, in the amount that you're asking for possibly. Yeah, that's, that's, I suspect that might be a tough sell. So.
If you leave your contact information, Mr. Ruielli, our business manager can?
Sure, sure. And I'd be very happy to look at your line details. I'm educated, you know, so I, yeah, yeah, I like numbers, so, anyway.
If there's a slip out, if you can put your email or phone number on that and give that to us, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. We'll continue with the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Personnel recommendations. Audrey Evans, long-term sub, Manning 3rd grade, dual. Stephanie Princess, long-term sub, WHS Family and Consumer Science. Eleanor Kunnin, teaching assistant. Sarah Potnick Anderson, teaching assistant. Two, approval of additional November and December 2024 expenditure report. Three, ratification of the November 2024 regular payroll. Four, student tours, Westmont High School. That concludes. And get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Stecchetti?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll proceed to our public hearing on a tentative tax levy. We'll start with the, I'm sorry. We'll start with calling this public hearing to order regarding this proposed 2024 tax levy. And then we'll next go to Anthony Ruielli, who will review the levy at this time.
So tonight is the 2024 tax levy, but here is a breakdown of the whole timeframe. So on November 12, board meeting, the district approved the tentative levy. On December 5, the truth and taxation hearing was posted in the local paper. And then by the 31st of December, it would have to be filed to the DuPage ROE. So a little bit of definitions, so everyone is on the same page as we go along. Levy is a projection, so it is projecting what the taxpayers will pay in June and September. The extension is actually the dollars that the county will allocate to the taxpayers. So again, tonight is the projection, and the extension will come out in April that will tell what is the tax increase. EAV is the equalized assessed valuation, so it's 1/3 of your tax home and your market value on your home. New property growth is any additions or new construction in the taxing body. And CPI is the consumer price index, so inflation. In DuPage County, we're a collar county, so we are capped at 5% or CPI whatever is lesser. For the 2024 levy, the CPI being used is 3.4%. So this breaks down in red what the district has levied, so what projected. In blue, inflation, so looking back in 2018, the inflation. And in green, what taxes actually increased by. So for example, in 2023, the district projected and levy 11%. Inflation that year was 6.4, and what we actually received was 5%. So this really breaks down that we are not asking and taxes won't be increased by 11%. It's actually in line with inflation. So inflation is going to be 3.4% for this levy year, so it is going to be in line with This breaks down the EAV history of the district. For 2024 levy, we are projected $700 million of EAV. In the last year levy, the district actually had 614%, or $614 million in EAV. This breaks down in green what the new property growth was actually at, and in red what the district projected. There was a significant decrease from 2022 to 2023, roughly $3 million down to $800,000. That's largely due to increase in construction costs. So the taxing body saw a significant decrease of new construction, new additions because of the large increase of construction costs. There was just a lot less construction going on in, in our taxing body. And for the 2024 levy, we are projecting $6 million. The reason why we are projecting that high is because we want to capture all the new construction and new growth, just in case that does happen. Because if you project less, you lose those dollars every year compounded. This breaks down the levy, so what the district asked and projected, with the extension to what the district actually received back in 2022, 2023, and now the projection for So for the 2024 levy, the district is levying $32.1 million. That is roughly 11.33% increase from the prior year. Again, that does not mean taxes will be increased by 11.33%. That is just projecting so the district can capture all the possible dollars and not lose any if it comes at that level. And again, the district is capped at 5%. So the percentage increase would never go or exceed 5%.
Remind me how the TIF impacts new growth. Anything that was built in the TIF is not calculated until the TIF ends.
Correct. So anything in the TIF, which is the downtown Westmont, does not go in onto the tax bills until 2036. So all the new growth, all the new construction going downtown does not factor in into the new property growth for this year. It would be in 2037 because it rolls off in 2036.
So we don't, which is why we don't see like the apartment building on any of the previous years.
Correct. We won't see that until 2036, 37. The one, one note, the referendum, if it does pass, it does not affect the taxes in the 2024 levy, it would be affecting 2025. So taxpayers, if the referendum does pass, won't see that increase until June and September of 2026.
And so even with that graduated kind of thing?
Staircase.
The staircase. Not let her, it just kind of pushes that off even.
Be like three years.
That impact, that burden isn't felt.
Yeah, 10, yeah, yeah. It actually pushes out three years because the first impact of the referendum is 2026, so it delays a year.
And we are not budgeting in any way that is different from any of the other school districts out there?
No, this is best practice. Every school district levies more than what they're actually receiving because at that point, they're capturing as much dollars that the district can receive. Because if they projected less than what the county actually gives, that difference is gone forever and compounded. So every district does this process and does this levy hearing.
And you can see the history going back seven years you have it?
Correct.
Prior to you being CSBO, that this was also, we levied, we asked for, we projected more than we actually received.
Correct. This levy increase history really breaks down in red again, what the district asked for, green, what the district actually received, and then blue, CPI inflation. So historically, you know, dating back to even in the 90s, the levy increase runs with inflation.
So again, the levy is a projection, is not how much we are raising taxes by. We are capped at the ability to raise taxes essentially at CPI plus new growth.
Correct.
And the levy is not how much we raise taxes by.
Correct.
The extension is how much taxes actually go up, and we don't get a choice in that matter.
We do not get a choice in that matter. That matter, that information comes out in April, and that's from the county level.
The only thing that we can do is ask, and if we don't ask for enough, we lose those dollars on our budget forever.
Forever.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll ask if there are any additional comments from members of the Board of Education regarding the proposed 2024 tax levy. All right. Now, we will move to public comments concerning this specific topic of the proposed 2024 tax levy. Okay?
Just on education, when you say that the levy?
So it's more of a comment? We can't, wait, can you answer?
It is.
Okay, go ahead, no, if you.
If you have a question, you can.
Okay. I have point of order.
I, I refer. I want to, it be?
No, no. Just checking if you can ask, if we can answer your question. But we can, so.
Yes, go ahead.
I'll do my, I'm sorry. It's okay.
All right. If there are no other questions or comments, at this time, I declare that the public hearing on the proposed 2024 tax levy is closed. We'll move to our information and discussion. Just to recap, if anybody wants to, we had a good recap after, before the community watching.
Did everybody get Dr. Cozy's resume? I know some people had other obligations.
So do, we want to just recap our committee meeting and kind of what we've discussed and any other comments from there from board members. Starting the first part of it in that committee meeting for our community is discussing our location committee, and a big part of that is having, we've had people who've submitted their names already to be a part of that committee, but we wanted to have a facilitator for that piece, as we discussed the pros and cons of the different locations and all, well, all the locations as far as I'm concerned, that this board has considered or has on its plate. But we wanted, what's the best word, for that facilitator, kind of a non-bias that really doesn't have stake in that decision-making, so.
Do we establish 7th and the 14th as the location committee dates?
And do we know where?
At South.
South.
What time?
I mean, 6:00 or 6:30, is there a preference from the board?
Those are Tuesdays.
Yes.
6:30, we do things at 6:30 or 5:30. We either do 5:30 because it's a committee, or we do 6:30 because?
The one thing that'll happen on the 14th is it'll push back our regular board meeting, but that's okay.
And so at that time, is there a reason? All right, we can iron out the times with that, but there's no, we have 5:30 times open on the 14th to use that. We can figure that out and have that posted. We have the dates.
Yes, we have the dates. We'd like to post it and get in touch with everybody who volunteered to be on the community committee. Does the board have a preference if it's 6:00 or 6:30 or 5:30 on the 14th? I, whatever.
I feel like the earlier we can start, the better, so we're not here until 11:30 at night.
Speak up in here.
Oh, the earlier we can start, the better.
The earlier?
Yeah.
On the, on the 7th date?
5:30.
Is that what you want?
We can make it.
Just make them both 5:30.
5:30, yep.
5:30?
Yes.
Okay.
Because like, we're not, we're not attending that, right? That's between, that's that committee, we're not supposed to be there.
No, you can.
We can.
Yeah, you're part of that.
We can be there as taxpayers.
Okay.
But we should probably not be giving.
Speaking.
The majority of.
Okay. Does that make sure?
Input, yeah.
Yeah.
As if you're part of running that, there'll probably be at least two board members. That's part of that, just at least.
There to answer questions.
Yes.
Like we did on the town halls.
Or we do any committee meeting.
Right.
Sometimes there's six of us there, we just have to make it posted and make it known. That's the only rule.
To, so.
So we can be there as board members, it's not a town hall, it's a committee meeting.
I, just for me, I was planning not to go, I just don't want to influence, I just want to hear the results.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, you can hold.
I feel that's the same.
Like I said, it's not really a result, it's any committee meeting, just like the last one we just had, it was five of us here. But it's something that's, you know, really important, is people to want to be involved, and it's, like we said, it's a big part of the ask and concern from our community, and knowing like what options we have as far as location and going into that decision-making to help, really help the board is something that's important, that we want to consider input from our community.
Yeah.
And then the second part of, that the recap from this meeting is, I'm trying to remember your list, too.
Anthony's?
It's the same details as far as our ask and what our plans are with referendum and what we want to do. So that was discussed during that committee meeting. And the biggest part I heard from that is it's something that will be posted for anyone to view. And so from someone that just wants to know what the, that number is, to the person who wants to know how that's broken down. So it can satisfy the questions, I think, of both types of community members and what they want to know. And then our next, any other board discussion as far as the amount? We discuss mainly kind of two amounts, considering, you know, there's a lot of work that's been done by the board and administrators here about fine tuning what we are asking for and being more mindful of that ask and being cost-conscious. And I think, again, that's kind of detail in that, that the list of costs that we're looking at, but that's something that today, we're kind of, from the board, as you discuss, I guess, what you guys' thoughts of how you're approaching this for the community to hear. I think that's important, how are you looking at what the ask will be? Anyone want to speak to that? Is it something?
I was like, are we going to blur that with this, or are we going to talk about it?
Well, this is the time, this is the discussion.
Well, no, because we have the referendum discussion right there.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So that was discussed, and then the last part, I think.
Anthony's going to put together a menu for Leggett about different options that we could proceed with getting some renderings done that the board could choose from?
So it's just, it's, the biggest part of that is letting community know what the menu items are, not asking anyone to submit anything, but again, putting more information out there, what are, what's being considered as we look forward. Any other updates? Did I miss anything? Did I miss the first part?
No, I think they've covered everything.
All right. We're gonna move to our reporting from the IASB conference. So we had our tri-conference, how many weeks ago? Two, three weeks ago? They have every year that, I don't know, I think I take a lot from, we get, we have workshops and kind of a conference from people across the state, basically guided for school board members and as they approach different, as they approach different topics and concerns that any district has. But I think it's a great conference to get many ideas from, but it's like, anyone want to start with?
You know, actually, I'll start. I went to a session, the surprising power of belonging in schools. And it's something I think Jack has already accomplished here, you know, but I looked at it just from my perspective. The belonging can have far-reaching benefits they were emphasizing. They raise our sense of well-being and self-worth, improve our performance, lessen our defensiveness and hostility, make us more compassionate, so a condition for success. I just think back to my school experiences years ago, I always felt like an outsider, you know, I didn't feel that connection. So I think you've instilled that. In high school, you're working to instill it. In other schools, I think you have already. And they went on to say, when it's threatened, we feel worse about ourselves, we perform below our potential, behave impulsively, and we can lash out and be defensive. So it was just, it was interesting. One of the things they said was greet everybody at the door, the teachers, you know. They had studies, you know, in academic engagement increased 20%, 12 minutes per instructional hour. So you're getting more used to that time, one hour per instructional day. Conversely, disruptive behavior decreased by 70%, you know, from 13% to, of the time to 4%. So, you know, I think that also goes with the five essential survey, you know, that trust factor, you know, a safe environment. You know, and, you know, they talked about a shared belief held by members of a team, that the team is safe for interpersonal risk-taking. You know, I think that's important, to be able to speak up, you know, and not feel like you're going to be belittled. You know, and again, you know, that you won't be embarrassed, rejected, punished for speaking up. You know, that interpersonal trust and mutual respect. You know, I think you've achieved that in the schools, and I think that's why they do perform so well. So I think that's a key part. I thought it was fascinating. So, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to go.
It's hard to quantify when the teachers really care about students, but it's a huge factor.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it does show up in the trust, student teacher trust, but...
And I can see it with my kids, that the teachers really care about them.
Right.
I'm thankful.
I want to play on that. You can see it with the students. They're being educated, and they love the teachers when they're young, but when they hit puberty and all that, it's a little crazy. But once these guys hit the high school, they were feeling like, oh, they're tooting me as a peer almost. Like they were seeing me and hearing me speak, and you've done years of that. So like, that's a good, that's a good thing.
Yeah, definitely.
And as I say, lead to that, I went to a session where I'm like, wait, we're working on these steps already. I'm like, mine was on step-by-step approach for how boards can support equity. Any more, Kevin, before?
No, no, no.
I'm going off on a tangent.
Thank you.
Arlington Heights District, board members and admin had presented this. Dr. Joji is one of the board members, a parent in the school, in the school district, and she did her, was it her dissertation, on how equity in schools work. She ended up doing a whole thing, and this was part of her presentation. But same thing, it's getting in there, understanding who you are. Each presenter came up with who they were, with their ethnic backgrounds, how they, how they defined themselves with their ethnic backgrounds, how they defined themselves by what college they went to, and what their community was. Even if they were in the nerd community or in the sports community, they defined themselves by that. So it was, it was nice going through all those approaches and just getting out and looking at everyone in the community, holding, holding events that bring everybody in, and they can advise, and feeling connected, even outside of school hours. And like I said, I feel like we are on those steps when we hired Edith in place and everything. Like we, we had it before, it fell off with pandemic, but then hiring Edith, we're seeing more and more, and we have our students having conferences and they're, you know, with their backgrounds and doing fun things and events. So I feel like we were on a good page heading, heading in that direction.
Besides just being at, being in a couple of sessions, presenting in a couple of sessions, I also went to a session on TIFs, which was very informative, because I just wanted to understand our TIF differently. I feel like I understand our TIF, but I haven't done a session on a TIF because it was like, well, we're just in it. And so it was a, it was a very informative session, and it makes me look at like, all of the work that the village has done differently. And, yeah, a TIF is, a TIF is essentially transferring the taxes from, from the community onto us, right? So when we think about like, our long-term budget, essentially, right, we, when the TIF started, that is when our budget, you know, we had to start, we had to tighten our belt in a different way, and essentially have tightened our belt ever since, and will continue to tighten our belt until 2036 and probably well after. But a TIF is a tax on, on the, on the public services. And when I think about the public services that, that are affected by the two TIFs that are in Westmont, the library being one of them, the library is impacted by the two TIFs all across all of the square footage of Westmont and all of the miles of Westmont, the fire department, the police department, all impacted. Our, our neighbor district to the south, Marker, is affected by their TIF, which happens to be doing incredibly well. And we are impacted by our TIF, which is, which is not doing as well. And the city wants to, you know, continue it. But I also look at the very stark differences in like, the size of the TIFs in comparison to how much of the community we serve. Our TIF, which is essentially Naperville to 55th Street, and then, you know, the width of Burlington and Quincy, almost, the width of the entire town, as a percentage, is a much larger portion of our population that we, that we pull our budget from, as opposed to Markers. So like, just seeing it in a very different way as, as a tax on us, has helped me kind of put together like, a portion of how we got here, a portion of why it's been so hard to do projects, a portion of why it's been so hard to save money over the years, and why it's going to continue to be. Because it's, because, because we're getting taxed to do things to make Westmont more interesting, which is beneficial, right? It's beneficial. Business is coming to Westmont is absolutely beneficial. But, but the public projects are being funded to make partially by the TIF. And so, yeah, it was a very interesting, it's a very interesting and super informative session. I'm glad I did it. It was on the last day. And it just, it filled in a lot of history for me. It filled in a lot of history for me.
I attended several. I started with the equity immersion, fostering belonging. And that was very eye-opening, as far as hearing from districts and then another speaker about how they've done that with their districts and their students more so than, I would say, I think beyond that, the community becomes involved. But a lot of, that, I think, the sense of what Kevin, you guys are talking about, and making their students feel, feel needed and feel involved, or feel like a person, I would say. And I think in some districts that didn't, and still probably doesn't necessarily have the best, but they have administrators there that show their expertise and how they deal with discipline, and how they deal with inclusion to make students feel like they were important and they were invested in their learning. And then you see the improvements from that, and just different takes on how they did that, which was, I think it was really good to hear and something you can use as far as, in any efforts that we do as far as teaching, giving emotional support, just seeing students beyond their scores and things like that, that they're more than that. And then that, when you have that, and then that in response, their performance becomes better. And they had kids that were speaking to large, large amount of people, just talking about their story and other people learning from that. And there's some other initiatives that they had that I thought was, was really good for, from that aspect. They had a great choir that included all types of kids with different disabilities, and that was tear-jerking, but also just good to see that they were leading this choir and, you know, the patience they had with people and how they included even those children in that choir was another example of that you can do. There's so much more that you can do. It's not necessarily easy, but you can do it. They don't look at it from an aspect of, oh, we can, or how can you, they figured out a way, and they did that. So...
Was that by Willowbrook's district, Willowbrook High School?
No, I would have to find out. But they traveled a little bit of ways, and it was like, that was that icy rain that day, and they still made it. I can get that to you.
Okay.
I went to another one on AI. Again, there's still much more that I can learn from that, but how, like, the different ways of looking at it and how we have to face it in certain ways. I think a big part of that is demystifying it, that we kind of look at AI from the 90s movies, and that, you know, they're going to take over. But basically, just even some ways, like how do you, how do you teach with it? How do you, we're going to probably changing the way that we teach and how we include that. It's kind of mind-blowing, but even some of the great things from that and how teachers can use that. So a lot of this is just like information, giving us information, educating, but soon, like, as, I don't know, probably some of you can speak more to it, but some of the things, the technologies that are out there. Another great thing, another workshop I went to was a discussion about dual credit. Something good for me, because I have seen and seen the benefits of AP and our great work that we've done, and been able to tout that we're the first district in Illinois that reached platinum status. Sorry. But hearing about dual credit and the ways that different districts and schools are getting kids accredited outside of kind of that college route, and what kids were doing with the armed forces, getting, like, starting their, their courses that way, how they're doing it with, one big thing that I like is with union workers and trades, with carpentry, with electric, electric workers, that kids are starting to do work while in high school and earning kind of their credits and certificates to be like, union carpentry at younger ages than we were, that they've established some programs that way, almost like we do with AP. They get credit and they're involved in those programs, you know. And then working with, you know, there's some, there's some, I guess, guards of how we combine our work with community colleges, and people spoke to that. It's mostly like, in the southern area of Illinois, they've made great strides, but then there are also some roadblocks to getting that established from schools. But it starts with a conversation and working with our local community colleges too, to get those credits in place that, or even some kids are getting their AAs while they're in high school. So there are so many opportunities and so many examples that way of getting that. And then we had our, we were panelists on two of workshops, one with how we hired, went about hiring our new superintendent, and then the other way is establishing our tool. But a lot of districts are really interested in the work we did and how we did it. So that is another accolade for Westmont, that we are actually, you guys are actually doing great work. For those that don't think you are, there are people asking about your work and how you do it. So definitely can answer more questions about that later. But any other questions or comments?
It was a problem for our district that Leah and Adina were on two separate panels and presentations, so that was very nice. And of course, we've buried the headline here, that Adina was recognized, and many of you were there, as the board member of the year in Illinois. So that's, doesn't get much bigger than that.
Yep.
That she was recognized by the Illinois State Board of Education, and IASB is the Thomas Lee Burrows School Board Member of the Year in the state of Illinois. That's a big deal. And tomorrow morning, well, tonight, we're going to drive to Springfield, but tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, the Illinois State Board of Education and the state superintendent and the board of education for the state of Illinois will recognize Adina for that honor.
Congratulations again.
All deserved. All right. And then, there's statements. We'll go to our next discussion item with the referendum. Anyone go first? So basically, what I was asking for before, prematurely, was to, I don't know, just get your stance of where, you know, you're coming from, or I don't know, the other questions were Anthony, but just as board members, where your thoughts or concerns?
Since the last couple meetings, since the referendum didn't pass, we needed to bend. We needed to bend, and Anthony's done a great job of like, looking at the dollars and where we can separate everything. My go-to is a K-5 building at the 68.6, 68.5, 68.8, at the 68.8 for the next ballot. But, because the projects are still here, we still need to get this stuff done. And like you said, with us not having to tightening our budget, we need to get ahead somehow. And starting with a new building is going to get us there for the next 30 years or so. So that's where I stand on all that.
I agree with Ann.
Yeah, I'm at 68.8 also. It's just so important to take care of this issue, like you said, for the next 30 years. There's just so many projects, they're not going away, you know. So we can't kick the can down the road any longer, really. So that was my thought.
I don't want debt collectors coming for us, with the maxed-out credit card like Leah put there and Adina focused on as well, too. I think, again, that was a great analogy, just for people to continuously understand, as we've been giving fluid communication. That's one thing that I've enjoyed with this, this entire process, is us communicating with the community members, but more so taking into whatever has been presented to us, you know, coming up with ways to say, okay, we didn't think about that, you know, how can we implement this? Or if it can't be implemented, how can something from that, you know, being presented by community members, be of benefit to us, you know? So I really like the fact, like Ann said, even over the past couple of weeks, just seeing the drastic changes with the continuous communication, one, other ways that we could come up with, how it's going to be beneficial, again, as I stated, across the board for everybody. Again, we don't need any debt collectors coming for us, you know, any, any board of education debt collectors, if they may, you know, exist. We definitely have to figure this out. It's not even about whatever project, again, we just have... have to figure this out. It's not even about whatever projects, again, we just have just enough to cover. And then in hopes, again, keeping our fingers crossed, you know, that nothing occurs, you know, um, until something can be freed up. So I think with what has been done up to this point, lessening the amount, creating again, some flexibility there, um, from a financial aspect is really great. And I think just continuing to communicate that, um, but also having ways of showing that to the community members. I think it's going to be imperative for it to be successful, you know, um, in April. So.
I just want to echo one thing that Whitney said that I think has been something that I've enjoyed. My, I mean, my own personal schedule has allowed me to be involved a little bit more, um, since November. And I think the conversations, I just want to reiterate how important those have been and how fruitful they've been. Um, we're never going to get everybody, but I feel like we've really heard some concerns and had some very civil discourse over how we can come up with a solution that will, um, just scoop in more people's needs and concerns while still getting the district, um, and the students what they need. And so, um, while unfortunately I know there will always be a cohort of people who are just like, no, we, we just don't want a referendum. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure that we can address that group right now. Um, I think we've, we've done a really good job of addressing some, some real concerns, um, and just having more dialogue and, and hearing people. And I hope that we can continue that kind of conversation about many topics to come.
Mm-hmm.
And as we make more, um, specific decisions related to the building of the actual school, if we get there, um, and other things as they arise.
I deeply fear that sixty-eight million is going to be just barely enough. I, I deeply fear it. That is, I, I am, absolutely will go along with the will of the board and the will of the community because that's who we serve. And I cannot make that vote without saying that I deeply fear that sixty-eight million is just enough and that we will, we will be forced to kick something down the road.
Leah, that was, that was my initial concern too. I think I said something very similar. Jack or Anthony, could you, because I said the same thing, like I'm afraid that it's just not going to be enough.
Well, I think it's going to be enough.
Barely though, right.
I think it is going to be like
Right.
just enough, which doesn't actually
Mm-hmm.
like impact our long-term
Right.
goal, right? Which is to make something that is more sustainable from a financial, from a physical standpoint, like the, the goal of this board has always been, and I, and I hear all the things. And like I said, I will go along with the will of the board and the will of the community a hundred thousand percent. And I cannot say that with, I, I cannot make that, I cannot vote yes to that without saying that I deeply, deeply, deeply fear that the sixty-eight million is just not enough because it's
Or will be exactly enough and that we will continue
To cut it.
To have
Yes.
Because, because we have voted down three referendums, right? The community, four referendums now? The community has, has voted down four referendums. The community, um, said no to home rule twice, which was the only option for the village to help us fund this
Right.
was through home rule. So, so that the community and, and
Are you saying that's that, that the other one way that was looked into that was a different funding source?
Yep. Yep. So it's like the options over the last fifteen years have just been like, I'm going to cut that one, I'm going to cut that one, I'm going to cut that one, I'm going to cut that one. And like, and, and that's how we got here. It literally like, I'm getting like choked up because I'm so terrified. And it's like, we, we have, we have no more options.
Right.
We are out of options. We've tried every single option and the community, you know, and, and we can't change the past. I would love to go back and fix, I would love to go back and put a better preventative maintenance, plan in place, you know, twenty years ago. Um, I would love to go back and I look at the previous boards work of, we are going to choose to kick these down the road, um, multiple previous boards, right? Like, I would love to go back and change that and I can't, right? So the only thing that we can change going forward is, is our choices going forward. And, and I, I deeply fear this is just another like, yes, yes, we'll get a thing. And it's just another option like cutoff. So, which, which will have to do life safety, which is going to affect taxes and we will have to do the eleven million in bonds in 2027, which will be a net zero on taxes, but will just be another set of years where we can't, where we're not making significant impacts on the fiscal, the fiscal health. So.
Yes, I think
Oh, I was just going to say, I mean, I one hundred percent agree with everything you said. Um, my only other fear that's bigger is that the referendum doesn't pass again. And so I feel like for me, it's like which one prevails?
Which is why I will go with the will of the board and the community.
Yeah.
But I can't say yes without saying that.
Totally. And, and I think that's important for us to say. And I think it comes back to something we talked about at a board meeting a couple of weeks ago, which is just the, um, district financials in general. And there's other things that we are going to have to look at besides just our facilities as we're looking to make sure that we're in a secure position. And so I think that's also worth naming, um, because that is something else that's just whether it's us or future board that we're going to have to look at. Um, so I think that's another piece of it. But for me, the bigger fear of it not passing again is like, you know?
Yep. Like I said, I'm perfectly fine. Go on the will of the board.
It's terrifying.
It is terrifying, yeah.
I think, um, you know, looking at all this, we've said some must have, you know, but I think it's not a question with the, what's needed. Um, like we said, there's the, the list of problems, which they are, there's not, these are not upgrades like for a new car that we get. These are a list of things that need to be taken care of still exist. Um, and so it's not responsible for this board or, you know, any other board. Here just to ignore it like it's not an issue is not going to, um, is not rearing its ugly head as a district and financially that we shouldn't take care of. So this is still an issue. We still have projects that must, um, be done. Um, and we've vetted so many ways of, you know, different options. And people ask, oh, what options that you look at as far as not doing anything at all and not, um, or renovating and the cost with that and look in the way you look at that. Um, we've answered that question and what, you know, representatives, not all, but representatives from our community, you know, asked for this, um, new building for, um, at least our K through five. Um, we've answered that and we still have to answer a way of doing that. I think, um, people have asked, oh, you know, what about taking five million for here and over? We cannot do a new building piecemeal. You can't build, you know, part of a wall here and this here and have us, uh, do that responsibly and have that for our kids. Um, the other thing I want to, you know, just kind of address this, this thing that we've gotten over the past few months about, um, maintenance not, has not been done. I, it's hard for me to say that for a ninety-year-old building. If it wasn't done, it would have lasted ninety years. And so, you know, um, you listen to, you know, our, uh, to Joe and just speaking, uh, speaking about the issues that he hears about day in and day out. He almost gets choked up about that. But it's, you know, this is, we have to find a solution that's, you know, that's, that's better. And I have the same fears as you. I've gone back and forth because it's, I, I like having the options. I like giving our district, you know, that option of doing uh, more responsibly, like not shooting for, you know, a mansion or anything like that, but doing something responsibly. And I feel like we cut those down and, you know, I, I don't like that part. I have to be honest, even with my vote. I can't necessarily say I'm voting yes, being excited that we're cutting down our options. But I understand, you know, I've come to understand that some things maybe our community isn't ready for. You know, I don't know which other ways to look at it. Um, it's not the time, you know? And I, I would like to be more fiscally sound and yes, I would love to have a commitment that says, I don't, I won't use my debt anymore. I'm not going to charge that credit card anymore. But I think being that duality of being asked, don't spend money, but give me a better school for my kids. Like where do, where do we meet? And I, um, I feel like we're meeting at a point that, um, and we're doing some good and, and being inventive and, and on the ways that we're going to do that. But, um, yeah, I still, I guess, you know, that's just the guarantees. You can't, I can't necessarily give you a guarantee and, you know, and
We may not be in the board.
Right.
Right. We may not be here, yeah.
Right. So, um, you know, I, I understand where we are and how, you know, where we arrived so far as at least as I've been on this board. And it does get me back to that sixty-eight point eight million dollar ask, because I think it's more important to get this building done, um, and give our projected plan. People ask, oh, what if you don't get, you know, a seventy-four? Well, this is my plan for, in my head, not getting the seventy-four million plus. Um, and, you know, talking about even if we don't get this, that we do start that discussion. And people have asked that, or if you don't get that, where, where does it leave you? You have some great minds on this board that's trying and working really hard. Um, but, um, yeah, I think we, we are headed as a community to go, if we, this doesn't get done, where we should be all asking ourselves, well, why didn't you take care of this before? I think it goes right back, you know, to, um, the community as a whole. But I think many are trying and we have people that are involved and coming, um, and being involved with their ideas and their suggestions and asking for different ways to communicate. And I think that's wonderful. That shows that people are vested and they care. So, um, I've enjoyed that part of it because I said that even from the day that we were looking for our architect, I was like, just the practice of going this and getting our community involved and, and speaking out, that's what we wanted, you know, even more than a building is to have an engaged community. Um, the last thing I'd just say is just like as I, um, you know, we talk about the burden and things like that. I, you know, there are so many things, but we can go across the country. We can start with the state, you know? This is the way, you know, that we fund our facilities and, and our district is through the community.
Thank you.
It's funded, the community pays for its kids' education. And I, I don't have another way that our, you know, our local communities educate their kids publicly. I, I'm not that smart in that way, but this is the way that we use. And for me, you have me at kids as far as an investment, you have me there. But this is one way I know that my tax is not working. You have lying items saying where that money's going. In the world of taxes, I don't know where my money goes necessarily. But here in this district locally, I can see that it's funding my kids. I see how. You have meetings where you speak personally on that. Um, I'm going to invest in my kids here. I can't ask someone in Indiana or California to fund my kids' education. We have to do it here. It's through your community. And it costs.
Yeah. And the way we're asking you to be funded is how everybody else asks, you know? Like through a sales tax, Leah said, you, the village would have to be home rule and they're not home rule, you know? So it, it, we can't impose a sales tax. So.
I think, I know that the board cares deeply about what this community thinks. They are very interested, unbelievably interested in listening to community members. And I think this decision, if that's the direction you take, is clear indication of that.
So if there's no point of order, I'm just, it seems as the board is leaning, well, it's strongly favoring the sixty-eight point eight. I don't want to say strongly.
Yeah, it's tough.
But that's where
The wisest choice.
The direction is going that way.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, as I get direction from you guys, how we vote, it'll be that amount unless, is there objection to that? Do we need to speak about it anymore?
Do we have any wizards that could come up with another way of?
Right.
Outside of how we breaking it down up to this point? Because I think it's, it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
All right. So we'll get back to that. Any other comments or questions? I don't want to cut anyone off. All right. We'll move to our action items. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution setting the 2024 tax levy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Decady?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Number three, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing a supplemental tax levy to pay principal of an interest on outstanding limited bonds of community unit school district number two oh one, Deepage County, Illinois as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Decady?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Number three, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the SSCIP insurance renewal and cyber program in the combined amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred thirty-four, sorry, three hundred forty-three dollars as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Decady?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to authorize and direct the treasurer to pay bills received in December 2024 for the 2025 fiscal year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Decady?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Okay. And then is there a total? Is it just?
Sixty-eight million, eight hundred thousand.
And I just want to make sure I'm reading the motion and?
This is what you're voting?
Okay.
This is the motion to approve it, but this is the ballot question, if you want to sort of
Okay. So next we'll be, um, voting on the resolution for the, um, referendum with the ballot question I'm going to read now.
Okay.
Can I read from here? Shell, okay. Shell, the board of education of Westmont Community Unit School District number two oh one, Deepage County of Illinois, build and equip a school building to replace existing school buildings, acquire real property, alter, repair, and equip existing school buildings and improve the sites thereof, including replacing, replacing mechanical systems and building infrastructure, installing safety and security improvements, renovating classrooms, science labs and spaces for student support services, and improving athletic facilities and parking lots, and issue bonds of said school district to the amount of sixty-eight million, eight hundred thousand for the purpose of paying for a cost thereof. So I'll move to the, um, most actual motion. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing sixty, sixty-eight million, eight hundred thousand school building bonds to the voters of community unit school district number two oh one, Deepage County, Illinois at the general election to be held on the first day of April 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Decady?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
No motions approved. Um, next we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Um, the main thing I want to say is, uh, we're finishing the first semester and I really am so grateful for our, I don't know how many students actually watched the board meeting, but anybody who can, can get, the kids were just outstanding this first semester. They're young people, they're growing, they make mistakes, but in the main, student behavior was outstanding. And that's not something that we take for granted. We talk about all the awards and the accolades and the numbers, but I mean, I can tell you, it's, it's really, uh, like Kevin had mentioned, I think the love they get from their families in this community and the tremendous love they get from the teachers and the staff is really incredible. And I think it shows up in the climate and culture in the buildings. I'm so proud of how we treat our kids in this community and the results show, I, you know, there's an old, you know, belief that you don't talk about this because then you jinx yourself. So maybe I'm doing that. But I think it's worth mentioning how excellent our kids are. I think it's a direct result of the, and it's so hard to quantify, but I see so many of our teachers and support staff and the administrators too, go above and beyond to really care about kids. And there's things we don't even talk about, like some of our kids are really struggling and they have a hard time regulating and they engage in some behaviors at times, especially the little ones that are really like something that wasn't as prevalent in the past. But the love That's awesome. And I think the board leads with compassion, there's no question, sets a tone for the whole district. So that's the thing I'm most grateful for as we close the first semester. The, the high school was named Ambassador School to one of the first six in the country. It's a huge deal. But I don't, I'm so grateful to what we have established here as a team. It's pretty incredible. Can we get better? Of course. Are we perfect? Absolutely not. But what we have is pretty special. So I'm grateful for that, and it needs to be recognized.
I do want to thank the administrators and the staff for the award that I received. It was a big surprise. I was going to speak to it. I wasn't trying to ignore it. But getting the recognized as a outstanding school board member, I was very moved and touched by that because it, you know, it is something that, we definitely don't do this for athletes, you know, necessarily get that. And I barely heard of that award except at that tri-conference and thought it was, it was nice to recognize all these people who, you know, work for their community, trying to make it better. I do think, I still think we have one of the best districts in the state. I really agree with that. Even if you look at the news and see, you know, what's going on, we're not the only one that's, you know, struggling, trying to heat, keep heat in our schools for our kids. And we have amazing staff. We have a community that's involved and cares. So I was honored to receive that. And I truly stated when I received that award, I receive it on behalf of all the board members here. Because we, you know, I don't do this in the vacuum. We do this work together. So I'm happy to be an ambassador, a sports person, a sports spokesman for our district and represent them well. But, you know, I'm truly thankful for that honor and accept it on you guys' behalf. And if, not just here, our board, but our community. So much more to recognize Westmont for, so I'm proud to do it. Any other board reports?
Just want to say congratulations to all our sports teams. They're already kicking butt for the winter sports. Our two students who won the translation
Oh, yeah.
Award. I'm drawing a blank right now. I just wanted to call it out. I also want to call out Anna and Patrick for presenting on how to get our students to be amazing. We have a lot going on. A lot of people do a lot of things in this district, and they're all really proud. And we are all proud of you. So, thank you.
I think we had a successful, another successful band organizing event with the craft show.
With the craft show, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you to all those parents who gave their time to make that a huge success. Band boosters and the music boosters.
What's the next goal for the money? I know they got new uniforms this year.
Yeah, they were, I love the new uniforms.
I know, they're, they're really cute.
So, yeah, keep looking out our amazing people around Westmont, who's doing great things. Okay, so there are no other public comments. I will move to our meetings and events. So final exams, sure, they're working hard right now, students are. But Westmont High Schools are involved in their final exams, starting tomorrow, December eighteenth until the twentieth. So wish them luck. And sure, they'll be happy to have a great break, which will start December twenty-third to January third. School resumes January sixth. And our next CUSD two oh one board meeting will be January fourteenth. Any other dates, anyone? Also, I think we had successful and great performance, winter performances, too. So act quick to that.
January fourteenth meeting.
Yes, so our seventh and the fourteenth.
I'm sorry, the fourteen, yes, but the fourteenth, the regular board meeting scheduled for South School.
Oh, okay. So as a reminder, our next scheduled CUSD board meeting will be January fourteenth at South School. But I just reminded myself again about our location committee meetings will be January seventh and the fourteenth. We're, say, South School, five thirty. All right. So at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss personnel issues, student discipline, sale and lease of real property, and potential litigation.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Decade?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
We will only return to the open session to adjourn. So there won't be any other business.
There's a lot for you to sign. If you could sign it before you get into